Good evening, officers, members and guests. We have councillor David Beeman and councillor Andrew Bolton attending the meeting. I'll call that in a second. Welcome to the meeting of the Environment, Overview and Scrutiny Committee of Monday, 26th of November 2018. If we can do the preliminaries first, which is the fire warning. Everybody here is aware of that and that we hop over to safe ways. Waitrose across the road if, in the event of a fire, there are no fire drills planned, I understand. Can you please do what I didn't do and turn your mobile phone off? And if we can move into the agenda. The minutes of the meeting of 17th September 2018 and the 22nd of October 2018, the special meeting, have been on the table for half an hour, I understand. And can we please confirm that I can sign the minutes? Are the minutes agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Apologies for absence and substitutions. I've been advised already that councillor Nick Williams and councillor David Hunter have had to give their apologies. Councillor Nazir has very kindly substituted. Welcome. Do we have any other apologies?
No, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item three on the agenda is declarations of interests. Do we have any declarations of interest?
Chairman, I haven't received any.
Members? No, okay, thank you. Item four is questions by members of the public. We have got a public question that has been asked by councillor David Beeman. And he has got a written copy. For the benefit of the webcast, we are unable to put the answer up. It will be put onto the website tomorrow in writing. The question, and I will read the responses to the individual sections of the question, which is reference the recent recycling and waste management contract awarded to BIFRA. Mr Beeman has asked how many bids were received? The answer to that is that seven bids were received at the pre-qualification stage. The top four scoring contractors were progressed to tender stage. No more than four were progressed to tender stage as the scores obtained by bidders five to seven were not deemed acceptable to deliver the level of service that Waverley Borough Council expects. Two of those four submitted a bid and were then progressed to the full tender stage. The answer to the question, did the existing contract of Yolias submit a bid? I'm afraid that is confidential, that matter. The third question was, was the contract awarded just on price or were other quality of service factors taken into account? Of course, this committee knows a little bit about that. The contract was awarded following pre-qualification stage where bidders were scored on quality alone. It was followed by a full tender stage where bids were evaluated on a price and quality split. The question, if other quality of service factors were taken into account, what were they and how were they weighted against price? The response to that is that bidders were required to respond to 22 questions in great detail. The questions fell into seven themes, accounting for a total of 40%, and they were mobilisation and exit plans, 6%, contract management resources, 10%, working arrangements, 16%, IT and reporting, 2%, social value, 2%, health and safety, 4%. The next question, although it's accepted that BIFRA are a large and well-known recycling and waste management provider, were any references taken of their services provided to other local authorities? The answer is that yes, as part of the pre-qualification process, BIFRA were required to submit details of 10 comparable contracts that they have worked on, complete with references. The question, is there a termination clause to the contract and can be exercised by both sides? Yes, under specific circumstances. And finally, the question, what provisions are therefore price increases on either a year-on-year inflation basis or when additional services are requested to be provided? The answer is that price increases will be determined by CPI inflation on an annual basis. Contractors have bid against a bill of quantities that include a unit price which will enable any increase in housing numbers to be easily incorporated, so as well as a schedule of rates for services beyond the core contract. I thank you very much for your question, Mr Beeman. There's quite a few questions within one question, but thank you for that. I hope you're satisfied. Do you have any quick supplementary questions you'd like to ask on any of those issues?
No, thank you, Chair. No, no supplementary questions, just to say thank you very much for a very comprehensive answer to the officer concern. Thank you very much indeed.
And that is Richard, I assume. Thank you very much, Mr Homewood. Okay, let us move on into the body of today's meeting. So item six is the Environment Corporate Priorities Update. Elizabeth Sims, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, members. So this is the regular report on your agendas, giving you the update on the key environment corporate priorities. Chairman, if you would like me to, I'll go through just each section and draw out the changes since the last meeting that have been included, if that would help.
Yes, we don't want to spend much time on this, but please, if you would.
So, members, on page 23, you've got the update to the Position on Local Plan, Part One, and it's really the last line on paragraph 1.1, which is of interest, in that all three of the claims that were heard in the High Court on the 9th and 10th of October were dismissed in a judgment on the 5th of November. Clearly, all members have been updated on that point, and I'm sure aware of that. Moving on to Local Plan, Part Two, in paragraph 2.2, the update there is since your special meeting on the 22nd of October, when you considered the report on Local Plan, Part Two, where you made various comments on the latest version of it, a report was due to be considered by the Executive and Council on the 31st of October with a view to approving the publication of the plan for pre-submission consultation. But it was, as you're aware, I'm sure, subsequently decided that the report should be deferred to a future executive and council meeting. And then in paragraph 2.4, the revised timetable that the executive have agreed is set out for you. And between now and then, clearly some work, additional work is going to be going on to liaise closely with the parishes and towns in those areas where there are proposed housing sites and indeed the relevant ward members. And there will be a continuation of discussions with the key stakeholders to gain further feedback on issues such as transport, water supply and sewerage. I think the next big update, Chairman, in the report is probably in relation to SIL. So if I can move members to paragraph 4.2. Again, at your meeting on the 22nd of October, you considered the report with view to the implementation of SIL, and that then carried forward to the adoption of the SIL charging schedule by the Executive and then Council on the 31st of October. And we have now set a date, as agreed by council, for implementation of SIL from the 1st of March. There's a parallel piece of work which has been going through Value for Money Customer Service, ONS, committee in respect to the governance arrangements, and the intention is that those arrangements will be in place by the time SIL is implemented. So if I can move on to take you through the update on Dunstable Park. That update then is that the legal challenge to the planning permission that was granted by the Secretary of State, we successfully defended that challenge at the same time as the local plan challenge in court. So that planning permission remains intact. And basically, work in relation to pursuing the implementation of that permission will now proceed to take place. And we've been in discussions with the Dunstable Park team throughout the period of the challenge and put in place some preparatory work. But we'll now see the applicants pushing on, I'm sure, in respect to the future stages of that important development. I don't think there's any further key updates, Chairman, to the report, but very happy to take any questions. Thank you very much.
Members, do any of you have any specific questions? Bearing in mind that the purpose of this is that if there's anything that you think would justify us putting this on to our, any of these items forward on to our next agenda or a future meeting agenda, then that really is the purpose of it, rather than to scrutinise it in any depth. But any simple questions that you think your residents would want to know about, I mean, for instance, in the neighbourhood plan issues? I see that we've still got plans on hold for Busbridge and Haskam. Is that still the case? Because, you know, this isn't new information necessarily.
Yes, we believe so. They're on hold.
Is that likely to cause problems? Should we be encouraging them to now, or is this more awkward and I'm stepping on people's toes? But surely they'll want their 25%, not their 15, don't they?
I think that's obviously a matter for them, Chairman. I mean, I think the reason these have been on hold is they are very small parishes, and I think there may be an issue, a question that they may be thinking about, is what purposes a neighbourhood plan is going to serve in their areas? So I think to some extent, they were probably watching and waiting to see what's happening both with the local plan and other neighbourhood plans. The reason they're on the list is because they did go through that process right at the start of getting their area designated as an area for doing a neighbourhood plan. And I think, and I don't know for certain, but I'm pretty sure, that's probably about as far as they've got with the work they've done.
Okay, thank you, Graham. So they're thinking 25% of nothing is the same as 15% of nothing, are they? If there's not a great... I wouldn't have thought that's the case for Busbridge, but...
I think it's fair to say that. I can't imagine they're expecting huge amounts of development within their parishes.
Councillor Morris by.
Just to follow on from that, I mean, both of those parishes are in my ward, mine and Richard Seaborn's ward. Initially, they were extremely keen to do this. In fact, they spurred Bramley on, and of course Bramley is well on its way to publishing now, or whatever the correct wording of process is. But they decided in the end, as Graham explained, that they didn't really see there was an extensive amount of work needed. A very small parish is, Busbridge is tiny, has grown quite dramatically with Milford Hospital Site, Leithfield Park, but nevertheless, any benefit that might have been there has been lost to them. And therefore, they're holding back, and I think they'll probably stay holding back, because just getting people to come forward and spend the time to write, you know, to set up this report incidentally, for, as you quite rightly said, probably very little, if any, benefit whatsoever, simply because, of course, what they don't know, and what none of us know, is what's hidden around the corner for various sites that might well come forward that haven't been put into any plan whatsoever and never considered. I can actually think of a few, but we can't talk about them particularly. And that's it. And it's not a basis for encouraging them, I think, to spend so much time producing what needs to be a very extensive report, which is acceptable to everybody. So watch this space. We're certainly not discouraging them, as borough members, as all councillors, but we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you. Members, okay, have we got any comments on Local Plan, Part Two? I mean, obviously, we had a special meeting, and I think I should thank the executive, or we should thank the executive for taking on board comments. I'm not sure how much of their decision came from our scrutiny or from the other council members who turned up here and spoke quite strongly on some of the issues. But a lot of people had put in representations. Thank you to councillor Bolton, any party played in getting that. I mean, it's very important for us to get it right. I think there's a lot of people keen to, and I don't think that it can cause us any harm looking at it a bit further, so I think that's good. Would you like to say anything? It's not really your job, but if there's a quick comment from you, councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Neighborhood plans, we've covered. Community infrastructure level, we'll be touching on in a bit. Any questions on Dunstable and progress? No? Brightwells, just a quick question, which is a lazy question really, but we were told some years ago that the planning stage was over. Are there any further planning applications expected for changes to the developments? Is there anything in the pipeline? Or can you say now the planning stage is over as far as the council's concerned?
Is this in relation to Brightwells?
Sorry, did I not say so? Yes, it is.
To Brightwells?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. I think largely the planning stages have been exhausted, but of course, in the implementation of any development, there will be further changes necessitated, as in any construction process. I think we will see, from time to time, other changes coming forward, whether they be by way of non-material amendments or further Section 73 applications, it's very difficult to tell. But that, as we're aware, is a very normal part of the building out of a major scheme. But clearly, the in principle, applications have been agreed and are implemented, and soon after Christmas, as agreed by the Joint Planning Committee, the work on the bridge will commence.
Okay, members, anything on Brightwells? Grounds maintenance, did we put that there, or has someone kindly put it in to update us? I can't remember. Do we normally do that?
I think that item's been on for a while, Chairman. I certainly haven't got anything to add to that. I don't know whether colleagues, I don't think Kelvin's here tonight, but I certainly haven't got any updates to what's in the report to offer you. Thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you. No comments to the executive from those issues then. The one we've really come along here for is to hear councillor Mary Forisiewski and councillor Byham speak to us about the progress of the start of the Task and Finish Group on Infrastructure, CIL, spending. So item seven, can I please ask Mary or Morris to, between you, update us? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank officers for the report, though it was very comprehensive, and it was a very worthwhile meeting. We actually met on the 15th of November. And once again, it was a pleasure to be working back with these guys. We make a great team. The Infrastructure Task and Finish Group, as I say, we met with officers on the 15th of November. A lot of discussion took place about the role and the purpose of this group, and it became clear that there's an enormous amount of work to be done, and it's not to be complicated or overlapped with other work that's going on, and the necessity to have some joined-up thinking, but one group in isolation can't complete this work. And I'd give examples of that, of leisure and value for money, that at some point in the future, these groups need to tie in to get a more holistic view. It's clear that the purpose, sorry, the purpose and output is set out in the following pages of your agenda, on pages 30 and 31. And I think it sets out nicely the theme as we go forward. We agreed the meeting structure is set out on page 48, and as a result of the scope, it was updated and tailored to subject matter relevant to the objectives of the group. Whilst we're acknowledging the enormous complications, the task and finish scope is set out in pages 43 and 50. And again, that alludes to us feeding in to the other areas that we need to work in the future towards. Officers agreed to provide an indicative priority classification for each group and project under the headings and the themes. And it's all set out in your agenda, and there's a lot of work to be done. We meet again on the 6th of December, but I'm pleased to say that working with the officers, it was a real insight into the amount of work that needs to be done. And the work that Wendy had done was brilliant in advance of us actually going forward. But as I say, it's really just at the starting point. All the information is in the agenda before you. As I say, there's work to be done, and look forward to seeing what we can bring back to you at the next meeting of the Environment and ONS meeting, as I say, on the 6th of December. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Forisiewski. Councillor Byham, you'd like to add to that?
I couldn't have said it better myself. A good report.
I think you could have done that.
Well, we know that.
No, very interesting meeting. I certainly felt, and I know Mary did, very worthwhile in that the paperwork was extensive, but we were able to perhaps add to it, ask questions which were relevant and would add to what we're trying to achieve with this, and look forward to continuing with that in the forthcoming meetings. So not much more to be said, really. We've set the scene, sorry, the scene has been set for us. We've had our input, and we now look forward to the forthcoming meetings.
Okay, there's probably no, I mean, we had our secret meeting, a smoke-filled room at pre-meeting half an hour ago. And we did, we were looking at what are we really doing here? And we want to be careful or at least clear about exactly what we're doing, because this isn't something that we're doing for the executive that's been brought to us, this is of our own initiative, your initiative. And we want to make sure that, I mean, obviously, very difficult issues of prioritising spending, you know, we are going to, all councillors are going to be concerned with this in the future at some point, and there are going to be issues that are raised. Wyatt brought up some very good points, you know, what exactly is the purpose? What are we going to end up with? Is it right to prioritise? Do you want to speak on that, as you pointed out earlier?
Yes, please.
Wyatt.
Let me start by apologising for not being at that previous meeting. I think you all know why I didn't make it. I'm desperately concerned that we're being overtasked and overdemanded, such that we might end up not coming up with clear enough conclusions. But I haven't talked to either of you in particular about this, so I'm looking forward to more discussions going forward. I am concerned that we're being asked to, in one fashion, look at the criteria as to how should we go about deciding whether Project A or Project B should get the funding? And do we need to reflect any balance of geography in where the funding goes? Do we need to reflect any balance of big and little projects? I don't know the answers to those questions, but I'm sure that it should be us as members debating them, rather than simply leaving it to an officer to come up with a first shot. I think we should be giving the guidance. But to then be taking a specific list takes us beyond the Task and Finish Group, because clearly if we do today's list, we're going to have to do next month's list, and the list at the end of the quarter. So I do wonder about that input. So if you look at pages, page 31, which is the sort of PowerPoint presentation, which says, "An output would be a prioritised list of projects", well, should it be? I'm not going to say no at this stage, I don't want to create a vote and a massive two-hour debate. And if you look at pages 45, 46, which is the sort of, again, I'm looking at the objective as an output, just as a means of going straight to the point, you know, that desired outcome of, at the very bottom of page 45, the first outcome, a prioritised list of projects from the IDP, well, should it be? And likewise, turn over the page to item four, becoming informed to help with the local plan delivery and prioritisation of SIL and Section 106 spending, going forward on into the future? Well, clearly that's not a task and finish group. So I'm left with a few concerns, really want to debate it more with colleagues. So whilst I'm really appreciative of where we've got, I think it gives us a head start. Don't be surprised if I come back with some tweaks, especially Mary and Morris, and I certainly don't want to negate the efforts you've so magnificently put and so well expressed so far. Thank you.
Thanks. Just before I bring Mary, councillor Forisiewski, back in, we were speaking earlier about where this goes to, and the intention, I think, is for our output to go to the governance board that will be set up, I think, the other side of Christmas, and which is going through the executive next week and went through Value for Money, Overview and Scrutiny last Monday. So that's where our information will go into. We would be advising, presumably largely on process, on how we in future are going to be doing the prioritising, rather than a specific, you know, a first priority list, because number one, there are an awful lot of councillors here who are going to be interested in this, and they're not going to be happy for two or three or four people to have done the list without political proportionality, geographical proportionality and all the rest. But I'll stop myself there. Mary?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for letting me come back. I think councillor Ramsdale just summed it up beautifully how complex this whole issue is. And if you remember, if we go back to one of our meetings, one of the problems we talked about was when we looked at the local plan, was how do we tie up planning with infrastructure, with the delivery plan, with leisure, with all the things that are in isolation, work separately, but need to work together? Which is why I started off by saying that this has got to have some joined-up thinking in the future and feeding in to other groups. But again, if we look at the bigger picture, it's enormous, and what I like about what we're doing here is the start of something, and who knows how it's going to develop over a period of time? But I think what we have got is we have got the basis, because all this group will be looking at, because the idea in the beginning was to look at how we tie everything up. And because, I think I said at one of the meetings, was I've got a list of what I'd like, and I want to measure that against a bank statement, and I want to know if we can deliver it and pay for it. And what we've actually got is, we may have extent permissions, we may have phased developments, we may have 106 contributions, it don't come forward, they can't deliver it. So where's the gaps? Where do we fill the gaps? And Wendy very well, and Graham described beautifully how there's options within that to look at the SIL and different pockets of money. But it's all got to tie into bigger picture that goes on across the borough, because planning needs to talk to leisure, leisure needs to talk to another group, so we all can work together. So what I like about this, it's the start, it's trial and error, we can learn a lot from it. But I think the bigger picture says that we need to take this as an example and apply it to a lot of other things, and see what we come out at the end of the day. Because if we've got a project, can we deliver it? If there's a shortfall, where do we make the shortfall up from? And this group in isolation can't do that. But we've got to realise that the task of this group is to look at the infrastructure delivery plan and the projects that are on there, prioritise them, and see if we can deliver them. That's what we should be looking at here. And a lot of the things that are in here, we will sort out and phase out as we start to identify exactly what we can deliver and how, and where the funding's come from. So I would say again, the officers are doing a great job, it's a starting point, but it is a good place to start. Thank you, Chairman.
So really, we'll be looking to try and put a protocol together. I mean, there are so many different variables, and we don't know how much money we'll get. But we were speaking about it earlier, but with the example of Farnham, let's say that there's £90 million, and that Cranley's going to get a third, Farnham's going to get a third, and the rest of the boroughs are going to get a third, if that's the way development is split over 15 years. When does the money come in? Well, in a trickle, fits and starts, and we don't know how much they'd be altogether. If Farnham wants to spend all of that £30 million on roads, because that's what it needs, well, it can't, unless it is decided that every penny is going to be stacked up and nothing else will. And, you know, if you speak to the county council, they're very worried about how things might turn out, and their attitude at the moment is that small amounts of Section 106 funds that they've got, they'll use as a, to try and forward, to prepare for and put in bids in order to get real big money out of the, what do we call it, local enterprise partnership, the net. So, thanks. Yes, it is a bit difficult to know where we're going, and hopefully, you can, you know, through your meetings before our next meeting in January, come and report back to us then, and let us know which direction we should be heading, and perhaps some advice as to, you know, how we can put together or help with a protocol that will help sort out these problems in future, just to preempt problems that are going to happen and difficulties that are going to arise. Mary?
Thank you for letting me come back. Just very quickly, one of the things that were highlighted in the meeting was how towns and parishes really need to have a grasp on their own wish list, because that information was lacking. So when we looked at prioritising projects, they were across the borough and not specific to a location. And when we talk about neighbourhood plans and the extra 10% they may get as a result, there was very little information there from the towns and parishes saying, actually, this is what I need. And I think our towns and parishes need to be working more closely with Waverley to say, it's what you need locally. Otherwise, you can't blame officers for wanting to build a bridge in Elmbridge if somewhere else needs a project, doing just as bad if you haven't put it on your wish list. So it's how do you prioritise? What is priority? So towns and parishes need to be more akin with their wish list. Thank you, Chairman.
I'm sure you're absolutely right. Yes, Morris?
The only fine thing, I, it's in there somewhere, but it's balancing what we're getting as required on the Section 106 agreements, how we balance that for specific, most of the time, pretty specific spending plans, what we need for education or whatever it is. And then suddenly, that all stops, or at least comes to a, not a complete grinding halt, but slows down dramatically, and SIL comes in and balancing those two together to achieve what we want, you know, what we can justify.
Thank you. Well, SIL is to finance the funding gap, isn't it? It's not to fund things, it's the funding gap, really, that, I think we have to bear that in mind. Before I ask Elizabeth if she wants to wrap things up, I will come to Peter in a second. I just wanted to ask councillor Bolton, as he's here, as far as the executive is concerned, are you happy with what we're doing here? Because you haven't asked us to do it. I mean, are you happy that this will be helpful? Is there any particular direction? You've seen what's going on at the moment, we're not entirely sure, but you might know. Is there any comment you'd like to raise or advise us, perhaps, you know, point us in a direction that you think the executive would like?
Thank you, Chairman. The only comment I thought which might be appropriate was that there doesn't seem to be any hurry with this process. We recognise that the SIL board is going to be set up soon. By the time it's gone through its process of rules and procedures and so on, we're not expecting to spend any... not expecting to spend any money until 2020. So time is not necessarily of the essence at the moment. We've got time to think about this and do it properly.
We've got time, but we haven't got any money. And councillor Isherwood?
Thanks, chairman. Really, you might wonder why I've been so silent. First of all, an apology to the officers and my colleagues on the task and finishing group. I had a diary malfunction in that I hadn't transferred my Waverley diary to my own diary, so I will speak more later.
But that is unforgivable. Mary, you can't forgive him either, can you?
Chairman, thank you very much for letting me come back. I must take an issue with councillor Bolton's point there about a matter of urgency. I believe that this is a matter of urgency, because we are, we have got major projects currently on that list that need delivering, and if we look at Cranley in isolation, and sorry for being parochial about it, but we've now got three strategic sites underway delivering 1,200 homes. We've had three accidents in Cranley in the last 10 days. Two people were knocked over, there was a four-car pilot the other, in the last few days. So when we're talking about prioritising and we're talking about priority, the strategic developments are underway, that money must be coming in, and it should start being spent on bridges. And I'm sorry, but that to me is priority and urgent, and we need to get a grasp of it. So if we've got projects, let's start delivering on them, because the developers are building, so that money must be somewhere in the system for that work to get underway. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Ramsdale?
I really wanted to reflect on Mary's point there and contrast it with Andrew's. I think what Andrew was saying is the formality of when these funds will be called SIL means there's a time delay. Clearly, that doesn't stop accidents happening, because we say, well, we haven't any funds to do anything about it until such a date. So it may well be that the work we're doing, looking at priorities, can help feed the Section 106 process in the time interval, because it's Section 106 monies that we have today. So if they're not committed, maybe with Elizabeth, we can work a means by which they get on that, they get on a list, and until SIL kicks in, there are suggestions for Section 106. But since you're about to speak, you can pick that up. I take your point that there's real issues on the ground that need dealing with, but the mechanism to deal with will become SIL some time away. Doesn't stop us taking the action.
Elizabeth, sorry, I think we finally have got to you, please.
Thank you, chairman. I didn't want to add very much more, other than just to say that contextually, personally, I've been very keen that this piece of work is carried out, and delighted members have engaged with it. Throughout the last four, five years, I've been very conscious in my role how important infrastructure delivery has become in conjunction with the planned growth. And while we have an adopted plan, we're moving forward, these sites are continuing to come forward, but infrastructure remains so important to our residents, to all members, and indeed to us as officers. So we've got a long way with SIL, we're going forward, setting up the governance arrangements. Clearly, this group and the work of this committee is not intended to duplicate the work of the governance board, but it's got a very important role to support that work and those arrangements coming together, so that the prioritisation of the current IDP will make it a more holistic and meaningful document to support those governance decisions once they start to be made. So the SIL money won't come in for a while, we know that's absolutely right, but it has been the decision taken that we want to get ahead of the game, get our arrangements in place, all our administrative procedures in place, so we're ready to roll out SIL and be ready to make those spending decisions as soon as we need to. In terms of the work informing Section 106, clearly many 106 obligations are already picked up in the IDP, and they are identified. And of course, Section 106 will continue to be a tool that we use, even after SIL, if we need to use it for site-specific infrastructure, and it needs to be targeted, it needs to be directly relevant. So to some extent, 106 takes care of itself, that once it's identified as being essential, that infrastructure has to be provided if that development's going to be built out. But it's still, the work will still be helpful in giving a steer to understanding what areas are important corporately to be funded through Section 106, when those decisions, for example, through leisure and play spaces are made. So I think that the work will have quite a wide-ranging benefit, but certainly, as I say, feeding into the governance arrangements of SIL, I think it will be a really useful exercise, and I'm sure the executive, when they come to make decisions about confirming the governance arrangements and the IDP prioritisation, will really appreciate the input that this work is going to have. So that's my own personal viewpoints, head of planning, but I hope that's helpful as a summary too. Thank you very much, chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mary? A last word.
Yeah, it will be my last word, but it actually comes back to what Wyatt was saying there about the purpose of this group, and the purpose of this task and finish group. We shouldn't get this group mixed up with SIL, this is not about SIL, SIL is part of it. What this task group is asked to do is to prioritise and get projects funding, and most of these projects will come from 106, the ones that are prioritised. So it's not about SIL in isolation, it's about prioritising the things that need doing and delivering them. That's what this task group is about, it's not about SIL.
Do we need to, perhaps Wendy might, for people on webcast who are unaware, new scrutiny officer is Wendy Cooper, welcome Wendy, I think some of them may have seen you before, who has, I think, fitted in ruts suspiciously smoothly, and things are going very well. So please, could you, have you seen anything that, or have you heard anything that's been said that makes you think that this scoping document's going to need to be tweaked or whatever? Is this something that you're taking away to tweak this, or can it go forward as it is? I mean, it is an internal document entirely, so, you know, it's not that important that every change to it is made public at the time or whatever, it's just, we want to do the best job that we can. So anything that you think would need changing, or any other officers?
I think that we probably could just have a quick look at the outcomes and just make sure that we're absolutely clear, the specifics, and that we might need to just separate the matter a little bit more, so when we talk about having a prioritised list or so forth. So I was just going to go away and have another look at that in the next day or so, but largely, I think most of it's, we seem to be in the same place on, from what I can see, unless anyone's shouting.
Graham Parrott, if you want to come in?
I was only going to say, chairman, that I think one of the ways to sort of characterise this work is that, as Elizabeth quite rightly pointed out, you don't want to be duplicating the work of the SIL governance board, that would be separate, that one, the arrangements, I'm sure will be arrangements where there'll be a bidding process, and there'll be criteria for that board to decide, when it has some SIL money, what that SIL money's going to be spent on. I think our view as planning officers is, to help inform that process, there will be out there a list of projects that are still in the infrastructure delivery plan, and to some extent, if one of those projects comes in front of the board, I think it would be helpful to know, you know, what level of priority perhaps that project has been seen to have. So that's where it is. So certainly isn't about this group, for example, deciding what, where money should be spent necessarily, because that's a slightly different matter. This is about just trying to help us identify some of the priorities. And perhaps I ought to say, a lot of the projects, and we did mention this at the group meeting, some of those projects are already prioritised or don't need to be prioritised. If they're in a Section 106 agreement, and they're required for that development, then that's it, you know, and there's no role really to prioritise them, because they're committed already. So, but there are clearly some areas of projects where there's an expectation that that money would come through SIL potentially, and they're all limited, and after, it is fairly limited funds of Section 106 money, from, I have to say, going back to the old, what we call the old planning infrastructure contributions regime, when we still had projects where we could pool contributions, and some of that money is also still there. So I think there may be a role there in helping to identify if there's any of those funds that should be, should be being, you know, where projects which should be prioritised might benefit from those funds.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll wrap it up there. A last word from councillor Bolton.
Thank you, chairman. I don't want to get into an argument about who's responsible for what, I think it's far too early to do that, but I do think that in the longer term, this scrutiny committee may be responsible for scrutinising the SIL governance board. So for this group to start setting some priorities, which I thought were going to be the responsibility of the SIL governance board, might be contradictory, but I just want to leave that thought with you. Thank you.
You almost say that it should be a joint committee of VFM, well, no, it's money, isn't it, and it's planning, yes. Okay. Peter?
Exactly that. It should be a joint overview and scrutiny when it comes, not just the environment, I feel.
I think this is such a big issue, we just want to make sure that what we're doing is for all the members, so that all the members and members of the public and all our residents can have some confidence that this has all been thought about from every different angle, before we head off into it and frit away multi-millions of pounds when big lumps are needed, or the opposite. Okay. And Wyatt, you wrap up?
I must admit, I don't fully understand right now just what the SIL governance board would be doing if we were doing all the outputs that are achieved in here. Our role is one of scrutiny, so the scrutiny of the SIL governance board seems eminently sensible. Now, whether there is already a definition of how that will work that we can scrutinise, I don't know. Or maybe our overview role means that we come up with recommendations about how the SIL governance board should work, or perhaps look at some of the issues about how it should work and give it feedback. There's clearly a couple of hands in this. I'm drifting more away as I talk from this simply being a role that we do to producing a list of priorities. It might be that we look at some specific cases to try and form these suggestions and guidelines, but I don't think we should be rubber-stamping a list to go into the centre. But I look forward to further debate.
Yeah, I think from what I see here, that it will be very useful if we can get some of those outside bodies that are listed in front of you to give them, give us their viewpoint. I think that could be particularly useful. Okay. And of course, the governance board, the SIL governance board issue is going before the executive next Tuesday evening, 6.45pm. Okay, if we can move on, please, to, is it item seven? Where are we now? No, it's item eight, we've done seven, which is the corporate performance report for the second quarter. Nora Koppen, could you please introduce this item?
Thank you very much, chairman. I just wanted quickly to say thank you to all the members for the very valuable feedback we received last time around about the format of the report. We have taken those suggestions on board and included them in the report, so the format that you see today has changed, especially, I think, there's an additional clarity to the key performance indicators section, which was a little bit enigmatic last time around, so hopefully that will be clearer going forward for the members and the officers as well, to analyse the trends and see which areas are actually performing well or underperforming as well. As the committee is aware, the report includes overview of all the service areas, but we specifically ask this committee to scrutinise performance for the environmental services and planning, which can be found on the page 75 to 82 of this agenda. Should there be any questions related to other sections which aren't part of the remit of the committee, we're happy to take them offline and come back to you with answers once we consult the relevant officers. I would start the quick summary on the page 75 with environmental key performance indicators. As the members can see, we can see very great improvement in performance from five indicators underperforming in quarter one, only two performing in red, which concern indicator E1 relating to reject rates. We still struggle with reject rates coming from the bring sites, and also the indicator E3 concerning the street cleanliness. With regards to service plans, which can be found on the page 77 of the agenda, most of them are performing on target and are on track for completion. There's three of them which are off target at the moment. There are proposed new due dates included as well in the report. The key vacancies posts were now filled in, and Richard can say a little bit more about it in a second, if there are any questions. Moving on to planning, on to page 80 of the report, only two of the key performance indicators were underperforming just slightly under the target, which concerns the percentage of planning applications determined within 26 weeks, indicator P1, and also the second indicator, which is an internal indicator monitoring the planning appeals allowed, have been also slightly below the target. Most of the service plan actions are performing on target. Some of the actions which were off target were mentioned on page 81. There were some suggested new finished due dates proposed as well, and that was already agreed with the portfolio holder. And I think that's, there's no any specific recommendations resulting from the report, but we are happy to welcome any feedback or comments the committee have. That will be all from me, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much indeed, Nora. So, members, if we can ignore the first pages, please, bring those up with officers, if there's anything in the stuff that is not the remit of our committee. Page 75 is where we start, and you'll see that we have got a problem there with the KPI E1, the key performance indicator E1, which is the materials recovery facilities reject rate, which we want to be as low as possible, and our target is 5%. We're up to 11.6% in quarter one, where historically we'd been pretty good and on target, reasonably on target historically, and it's come down to 10.5%, but that is twice what it should be. We did in our smoke-filled room debate earlier, over the page, it says that contamination at community recycling sites is the issue, and we're querying, does that mean bring sites? Because we have in the past been told that the problem was bring sites. So could we clarify that first, please?
Thank you, chair. It's a question of terminology. The county council now call their sites community recycling centres. They're actually the sites where you can take all your rubbish, not just recycling. Our sites, correctly titled, are household recycling centres, commonly known as bring sites. It is the bring sites that are the problem. There is clearly confusion amongst the public, who don't understand the difference between our sites and the county council sites, and are dumping all sorts of rubbish at our bring sites alongside the recycling they're meant to put there. So that's where we're getting lots of rejections at our bring sites, because of that use of them as dumps, as well as bring sites for recycling materials. The other issue here with this one is an international problem, in that the Chinese, certainly, and other countries are now being very selective about the recycling they will accept. And that's a problem for every local authority in this country and probably in Europe, because, for instance, in China now, the Chinese government has made it clear they can only accept four types of plastic. So a lot of the plastic we used to collect for recycling is now rejected, as unsuitable for shipping to China for processing. And that problem won't go away. So our materials recycling plants here are having to be more choosy about the materials they accept. So they're having to reject more of the stuff we're sending them, and as a result, our rejection rate has risen steeply in the last two months or so, and this is linked into the issues around the publicity, around the adverse effects of plastics on the environment, and the whole thing will have to be revisited at some point in the near future as to how we deal with all of these range of plastics. And part of the answer to that is going back to the beginning of the line and getting the manufacturers of plastic packaging to restrict the range of materials they produce in the first place, because that's where the problem arises. Thank you, chair.
Any particular comments? Councillor Bolton?
It's been explained. It's a very complex subject and it keeps on changing. And a lot of our residents don't follow the trend in any way whatsoever or don't wish to follow the trend in any way whatsoever. And one of these sad people occasionally goes and opens people's wheelie bins when they're presented at the doorstep, ready to be collected. I could do that tomorrow morning in my ward. But one particular place where there are wheelie bins on the high street, which I don't like, and I'm trying to get them moved, but you look inside and it's full of a whole range of garbage. It's supposed to be a blue container and it's full of a range. Now, what concerns me is that's being emptied, or appears to be emptied. Should it not be rejected, left with them, and they've got to do something about it? That's, that was the rule, I thought. And that happens in a range of different places. So, and people don't keep up to date with the changes that we promongate in terms of materials that take over the years. And I can remember many, many years ago councillors themselves having great difficulty in understanding. And one, one particular councillor, Bramley councillor no longer with us, who spent all of his time cutting the, the plastic window out of envelopes because we're told they weren't acceptable, and we were told that. But that stuck with him for a long time and he couldn't get over, I think he was indoctrinated into cutting little squares out of envelopes and he missed the opportunity of doing that when he didn't need to do so. But that's a silly example, but it epitomises the sort of problem we have. Everything keeps on changing and especially with China rejecting so many of the plastics that we, we have been used to being recycled. And I can think of lots, lots more, things like, for instance, plant pots, where we're told, we don't like black plant pots, but they don't tell us that we can or perhaps we can't recycle brown plant pots because they can be recognised by the, the electronic or whatever it is recognition systems on, in the MRF. So it's, it's going to, an ever-growing problem. And I think one of the first things we need to do, we were talking about, and I'm not quite clear with the BIFIR contract whether this is what we are going to do, is to do away with the, with the, our own bring sites.
Thank you very much. Going back to what Richard was saying earlier, if you don't mind, members. I was just thinking back to an hour and a half ago, whatever, when we were talking about this and it was commented that we're not, we don't seem to be seeing the amount of fly tipping that people were concerned would happen when the number of days of Farnham Tip was open and other tips have been closed more. You know, we were expecting quite a high level. And we were pleasantly surprised that we don't seem to be getting as much, so many problems of fly tipping as we had expected. But do these figures of 11.6 and 10.5%, where basically it's, the figures doubled, have doubled, is that related to the, to the tips issue, do we, do we think? Is it going to be the case that our, when we get, if, if we were to lose Farnham Tip, are these numbers going to go up to 50%? Because everyone's going to dump everything down at, at our bring sites, as we call them. Richard?
There is a separate report, Chair, on the agenda about the community recycling centres and the county's proposals. But certainly there is a fear that if they do close those two sites in Waverley, then people will begin to use our sites instead as the places to take their rubbish as opposed to recycling. And that is a big concern to us. The reject rate there is a combination of both rejections at our bring sites but also rejections from our blue bin collections as well. In terms of councillor Biome's comment about leaving the bins, we do operate a bin hanger scheme and the operatives are meant to, when they open the lid of the bin, if it is visibly, obviously contaminated, they're supposed to put a hanger on it and not empty it. We can reinforce that message with the contractor to remind them that it should be happening still as a way of trying to regulate and minimise the risk of rejection.
Thank you very much. Wyatt?
I guess I'm really looking at you, Richard, on this, but that MRF E1 red line seems to be ongoing and not especially getting better. I'd really like to be seeing some concrete proposals on just what can we do differently? What, what, would you be looking to us as councillors to be trying to push through? Or even people like me that also are on Surrey County Council to go and say, hey, you need to talk with Waverley about how we improve these things? I mean, it's been rumoured we're going to close the bring sites. Is that on an action plan? Will the new contract make a difference? Are there things in there that BIFIR will do that Veolia didn't used to do? I, I have always understood the possibility that blue bins that are full of general rubbish should get a hanger. It's just that all the sites I've been to, including where I have a rented property in the middle of a council estate, I've never seen a hanger. But I've seen lots of blue bins full of material that quite clearly at a glance was not appropriate to be in that blue bin. So I wonder if we could ask you for another time to come up with some specific suggestions on what your team could do and what we might do as, as members, specifically in this chamber and further afield, if, if that's something you want us to do.
Richard?
Certainly, Chair, I can do that. I can come back with some information on the number of bin hangars that have been issued over a period of time, which hopefully will demonstrate that that work is continuing. But obviously, we are reliant on the contractors. We are going into a phase now where we're coming to the end of the contract. So our challenge over the next 11 months is to maintain the performance of the incumbent contractor as they wind down their operation, as we prepare for the new contractor to come in and take over. So there's a challenge there in itself. But on top of that, we will remind them that they're supposed to be monitoring the, the level of contamination in the bins and indeed rejecting them if they, if they see contamination in them. So we can do that. We are issuing another guide at Christmas with the Christmas collection arrangements on it, but also as a reminder to people about what they can and can't put in the blue bin. The comment about, I'm afraid, orange flower pots is wrong. They can't be recycled either and it's not the colour of the flower pots, it's the hard plastic they're made of. They are one of the hard plastics that China won't accept. Generally, it is clear plastics for food packaging that are acceptable. Black plastic food trays are not acceptable. But no hard plastics like flower pots or toys are acceptable within recycling. So it is getting that correct message across to people and getting people to take care and that is the real challenge.
Thank you, Peter.
Just that. Thank you, Chairman. Many of these plastics, black, brown, whatever, hard or soft, have a recycling stamp on them. And, you know, I looked at one the other day, a black food thing, recycled, it said. But I know you can't, but the majority of our residents, I suspect, don't. So we do have a major problem in educating ourselves.
Richard, you, I don't want you to spend ages teaching us about what we can and can't recycle and how to recognise plastic from plastic, but...
There is, there is a clear dilemma here. The, the black plastic trays can be recycled, but they can't be recycled with the plant and machinery our processors currently have. And that's because in that process and in the MRF, the plastics are segregated by beams of light and jets of air. And the beams of light cannot penetrate through black or coloured plastic, only through clear plastic. So it's the technology at the MRF that determines what you can and can't recycle at any particular plant. They may be acceptable at another plant, in another county, another part of the country, but not in Waverley and not in Surrey.
Are you saying any plastic that isn't see-through can't go in our blue bins?
Essentially, that's the case, yes.
Shall I move swiftly on or should we debate that one? Sorry, folks, there will be a brief intermission, won't we? Councillor Bolton, would you like to comment?
Yes, I have heard the officer give an excellent presentation about recycling to members of the public. Perhaps we could ask him to give this presentation to councillors?
Probably too stupid to understand. I speak for myself. Okay, I'm just slightly cop-smacked and I'm not often, so it's true. I just feel like I've got to go and make some big signs up for the bin area now. I don't want to do, okay. Can we please, if we turn to page 76, please, where we've got a graph at the top there? We discussed this earlier. It's, the indicator is NI191. And members, we'd, certainly Wendy Cooper, a scrutiny officer, had, and Louise, I think, also had assumed that the blue line was the, well, you have to jump over, our goal, which it isn't. It is the quarter two figure, which you wouldn't normally draw like that. So we've asked in future, we don't have them in that format, that it is in a more normal format. I take it that you'll accept that and, and support that point because it is, do you find that confusing as well? That the current figure is, is just over 88, so, you know, it's not as though it's a, we've, we've done well, the residual household waste is, has come down. But the target is 90 and that is over the page. You can see that the target is 90, the third of it, which is an indicator E3 on page 75. So we don't have a, a problem with that particularly. Oh, hang on. No, sorry, that's, that's not street cleanliness, is it? Which one am I on? Sorry, yes, it's the second from the bottom. I looked at the wrong one. That's all the 90, 90 there. Yes, we are good on that. But if we can have that in a, in a more meaningful, in a, in a better format. The action plans you see on page 77, 95% of our action plans are completed or on track. The three which aren't are there. I don't have a particular problem with those, members. Have you any concerns you wish to raise in respect of the integrated customer contact services systems which have been going through Community ONS recently? And the food service plan and the health and safety service plan, slightly behind target, but all in hand. I'm happy with that, members. The other issue, if you turn to page 78, you'll see that we get the normal sort of finance update, or this is, this is what we've been getting. Value for Money ONS was quite confused by it and I'd raised it at a briefing some weeks ago. I would suggest people cross out the second column, which says total spent and committed thousand. Take that out of it and we've actually got something which we can understand, where we've got an approved budget, a forecast outturn and the forecast variance, which is really all that I think we need to know. But just a couple of tweaks there which we'd ask for. Apart from that, members, is there anything else that any of you would like to say on anything that's between pages 75 and 82? No? Okay, no comments to take forwards to the executive. So we will move on to, item nine is our air quality update. Richard Homewood?
Thank you, Chair. You have a report in front of you which tries to summarise where we are with air quality, emphasising that we've, we're making, still making considerable efforts over the last 12 months to ensure that the data we're collecting is accurate and robust. And by January, we'll have a full year of data that we have absolute confidence in in terms of diffusion tube data. And once we've ratified that, that full year of data, we'll then decide which bias factor to use, the local bias or the national bias, to adjust those figures and produce the report in the new year. We've always done it that way in that we always choose the bias factor that gives the worst case scenario. So we wait and see what the two bias factors are. We use the one that will give us the worst results effectively to give us the worst case scenario. So we can't say at this stage whether it'll be the national bias factor or the local bias factor we use. Because if the, the local bias factor turns out to be better than the, the national one, we'd use the national one because that gives us the higher results. Hopefully, members understand where I'm coming from with that. That's the way we've always approached it in Waverley. You'll recall that we, we've changed the arrangements for the diffusion tubes and got a new contractor on board to, to manage those for us, which is good. We've currently got a review of the air quality monitoring network, which has involved the Farnham Air Quality Working Group and the Air Quality Steering Group in that process of reviewing the locations. And there will be some minor changes to the locations of some of the tubes as a result of that work. And we've been working closely with those two groups and we're involving the town and parish councils and other bodies in that review as well so that we can get as many people on board as possible to support the way we're going forward with that. The two analysers have had a checkered history over the last 18 months. One of them was closed down during the development of the Christian Science Church site in Godemin. But that's now fully operational again since the end of August and starting to give us reliable figures once more. The Farnham analyser, however, is adjacent to the Woldmead development and we are seriously considering whether we should relocate that. Although that won't happen or no decision will be made before the end of the calendar year so that we have a full year of data from that location. We don't want to, to disrupt it halfway through the year or to take a few months out of that. Again, as I say, we'll make a decision once we've got the local bias factors, whether we use those or the national bias factors to adjust the results from the diffusion tubes. There's other air quality modelling work going on across Surrey in partnership with other boroughs and districts to look at NO2, PM10, PM2.5 for the first time to project what likely sources there are of that and what work may need to be done in the future to monitor PM2.5s as well, recognisers the more harmful particulate matter that penetrates deeper into the body tissues. There is a schools project underway across the county. We're participating in a school awareness raising project around air quality. And we are looking at electric vehicle charging points in, in some of our key car parks over the next 12 months to begin the process and trial, the uptake of electric vehicle charging points in our car parks. And we will put two charging points in the Boroughs Car Park and be changing our fleet vehicles to electric vehicles when they're due for replacement. That's a very broad overview of air quality work that's going on. I'm happy to answer any questions, Chair.
Thank you very much, Richard. Members? Boris?
With regard to the diffuser tubes, I know that we, and you mentioned, thank you, the fact that we've reviewed the positioning and decided on different positions. Bramley Parish Council were involved, I think. They've come forward with, and I don't know whether they've actually written in yet to say that, yeah, they're very happy to see it change because they were unhappy with the position of one particular diffuser tube. We think we have a better position rather than the one that's been chosen. How, how cast in stone is the, the new positions? Is there room for change if it's considered in the end properly that the suggestions we're making is better? If not, then obviously we're wasting our time, quite rightly.
But, Chair, you're certainly not wasting your time and officers are happy to continue to talk to, to representatives from the parish councils about locations. But we do have to follow the DEFRA guidance and it will be a case of having, having listened to everybody and then making a decision based on what people have said and in, in line with the DEFRA guidance as to where those tubes should be located in relation to residential properties, et cetera.
Quickly come back, I had no idea, but our chairman of our parish council has been looking into this in great, in great detail and come forward with the idea these tubes are very small, I understand. I'd always assumed they were quite long things that had to be tucked away somewhere. But they're tiny things and could be hidden in all sorts of places, perhaps.
The idea isn't to hide them because you want to get them. In fact, there are some very strict rules as to how high off the ground, how far from buildings, not in carriageways, there are all sorts of rules. Read, read your directives, if you love directives and the daughter directives. Richard, you wanted to comment on that?
I, I'd support you there, Chair. It's not a plan to hide them away. But they are small, they're less than four inches long and probably a cent-
are small, they're less than four inches long and probably a centimetre or a centimetre and a half in diameter, quite small tubes.
Test tube size?
Hmm, small, bit smaller, yes, but that sort of size. And all they do is absorb the air and absorb the chemicals in the air. And then they're sent off for analysis each month to see how much NO two has been absorbed into the, the, the material inside the tube.
Wyatt?
In some ways, I'm really pleased at the work that's happening on air quality under Andrew's leadership and with his portfolio. We've now got two groups positively working in the borough, one, the Waverley Air Quality Steering Group, which Richard attends, and the Farnham Air Quality Working Group, which Andrew and Richard normally both come to. And it's, what I'm really hopeful that we're going to see, and you'll see me or hear of me applying pressure at both of those groups, is to try and move away now from where do we focus yet more tubes, to what action are we actually doing on the ground or what are we pushing for in terms of county action or LEP action? There's big education processes that need to take place, some of the material needs to be used wider. We really do need to get away from arguing about where the tubes are located and accept that are our roads or we have serious problems and we want to see action. That's getting a lot of my energy, such as I have nowadays.
Absolutely, Vice Chairman, absolutely. Yes, I haven't seen you for ages, Richard, and if I can catch up a little bit, in terms of the automatic analysers, the Farnham analyser you've said is going to be, well, as we know through the Farnham Air Quality Working Group, the intention is to relocate it. Obviously, if we're relocating, ideally, we send someone out on the thirty first, late on the thirty first or early on the first of January, so you get a full year either side of it. Now, when I spoke to you, I wasn't able to talk about it publicly because, publicly because you said that, I think you told me at the time, it's probably back about April time, that we were looking at perhaps, looking at the contract for the air quality, automatic analyser contract, maintenance and looking after and calibration. It has, what has come of that, I assume, you know, that's, that's all over, we can talk about it, can we? Because you'd said that there were problems with that. Do we, are we going to have believable data from this year? And also because with the Woolmead having now been barricaded, I know that the automatic monitors outside of that, but traffic flows are different. It will still give us a comparison of what goes through the, the beta analyser and the three co-located tubes, so it'll still give us information. But will this year's data be reliable, do you think? I know you said we've got a choice of using the national bias factor or the local one we get from, from that. But when I've looked at our data, I'm not sure whether it's this or whether it was stuff that came to the Air Quality Steering Group, I saw significant differences between the readings from the three tubes, three, eight, eight A, eight B and eight C of our Farnham tubes, which are all inside the automatic monitor. So it gives us, it tells us how well the diffusion tubes are made, or alternatively, could be an indicator that the calibration of the beta monitor, the big monitor needs to be looked at, because it can be both ways that there are problems. Can you expand on how we should be doing this? Because I'm just concerned if we're not making a decision on moving the monitor, moving the one from the Woolmead, the idea is to put it halfway down South Street, I think, near Sainsbury's. If we're not going to do that until after Christmas and it then gets done in February, we're not going to get a year's data next year and, you know, it could be years before we've got stuff that residents could know they can be confident in. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, it is under consideration, the relocation, no, no final, no final decision has yet been made. I can now tell you, which I couldn't tell you when I wrote the report, is that we, we have appointed a new contractor to manage those analysers for us. That contractor also manages all of the analysers around Heathrow, so it's a very experienced and competent company. They will give us much more accurate data on a more regular basis and we're very pleased to have them on board. What that does mean is we will listen to their advice and if their advice is to leave it where it is, we will do that because they're far more expert in it than we are. However, we, whatever we do, we're also advised, my colleague Jeanette Guy has advised that as long as we have eighty percent of a year's data, that is sufficient, in accordance with the DEFRA guidance, to give us results that we can then use to, to determine the bias factor. So we will take that away and look at it certainly. The discrepancy between the three tubes in the same location really highlights the issue that diffusion tubes are an inexact science and it depends on how much air has actually got into each of those tubes, so they will differ. And that's why you have a bias factor to adjust those readings, to give you a more accurate reading, because the analysers give you the more accurate results. And then you look at the differences, you know, between that and the diffusion tube results. So I, I'm pleased to be able to say that we have this new contractor on board. I'm happy to discuss more of that in detail with you outside of this meeting, talk to you further about it. But certainly, looking forward, I am confident that in future, we will have robust, accurate data from the analysers and the diffusion tubes in future and be able to build on those results, work with other agencies to develop our action plan, which I know is something you're really keen on doing. But we do need a good year of data to build the action plan on and use it to put pressure on other agencies, including the county councils, the highway authority, to come up with proposals that will help us reduce the levels of pollution. Because it's a team effort, it's not just Waverley Borough Council who can deliver the solutions to the problem. We can do the analysis, we can identify the problems, but solving those problems is a team effort that everybody has to play their part.
You're right, I mean, I'm slightly concerned that, I, I would echo what Wyatt said, which is that great work being done by some members of Farnham Air Quality Working Group on the relocation of the diffusion tubes and that's really welcome. Hopefully, we, we will be able to, to be confident that we're getting the best data that we can, or at least, you know, the, the worst data, in fact, is the idea, to find out how bad the problem is. So thank you very much, particularly to Catherine Powell, who's a resident air quality expert and, and to the local councillors who have been helping with that. But we don't have any solution to Farnham's problems. I see that the directive says, it, it suggests missions, measures to limit transport emissions through traffic planning and management. That's what we would like to see, I think, you know, realistic things to, to help the traffic and, and air quality that way. But then it says including congestion pricing, differentiated parking fees or other economic incentives, establishing low emission zones, none of which sound quite as nice as solving the traffic problem. They are things to fear, I think, as opposed to, we don't want to put parking fees up, retailers won't be happy with that and neither will residents, they're high enough as they are. So, yes, it is difficult. A lot of it depends upon perhaps, as Richard Cooper from Surrey County Council said to me, we need to bang together the heads of the developers, Chris Nicholson and Barclay Homes for Farnham and, you know, get a solution there because we really don't know where we're headed. And sorry, Elizabeth disappeared, so I can't ask whether we've got any changes coming in that respect. But, you know, we really do need to start making progress and Jeremy Hunt's keen to bring things forward, but he doesn't have a solution. It's just, you know, he seems to be trying to enable others to come up with solutions and it is difficult, Farnham doesn't have any easy solutions. And so if the rest of the borough is going to follow Farnham's example, don't, do it better. It's been done wrong in Farnham, we've had ten years with no progress and I'm as frustrated as, as Wyatt is that, that we still haven't got plans. But we're going to push and push and push and perhaps it will be helpful that we have got local elections coming up because that does focus minds on things that affect the residents, doesn't it? So perhaps we'll be able to move on with that. Okay, members or officers, any further comments on air quality that you'd like to make? Okay, thank you very much. I don't think we need to say, pass anything on to the executive in respect to that. Let's, so thank you very much, Richard Homewood, for that. Item ten is public space protection orders. We're twenty past eight, we've got that and we've got the S C C Community Recycling Centre, so we've got about, we can spend twenty minutes on each of these. Public space protection orders, dog fowling response to the public consultation, which is on pages ninety nine to one hundred and ten. And Richard's back to talk about poo this time.
Thank you, Chair. And it's been a long time coming, I have to say. As you'll see from the report in front of you, Chair, we started consultation on this in August twenty seventeen, so over a year ago, we started pre-consultation with the community on issues around dog fowling and issues around dog controls generally, to seek the views of the public and a range of agencies as to what the issues were and whether there was anything we needed to be doing about it. This report in itself confined itself to the dog fowling issue and the reason for that is that as a result of the pre-consultation and then the big public consultation, the feedback in terms of dog fowling was quite emphatic in terms of people recognising a problem and feeling that something should be done to address that problem. Whereas the issue around dog controls, which was around dog exclusion areas, dogs on lead by direction, dogs on lead, dogs on lead seasonal restrictions, where there are ground nesting birds and other wildlife issues, and certainly the, the limits on the number of dogs that one person can exercise at any one time, produce a huge amount of feedback, but very mixed views and very mixed feedback. So we're trying to work our way through over twelve hundred responses on the Survey Monkey to that at the moment. So that'll be coming to you later around the other dog control issues. This is purely about dog fowling. As I said in the report, there was a clear message from the consultation that people were concerned about people failing to clear up after their dog and that in terms of asking them, should something be done enforcement wise, it was very emphatic. Ninety plus percent of people said, yes, something should be done and people should be fined for, for not clearing up after their dog. We've looked at dog fowling reports, it is heavily under-reported. Anecdotally, lots of people moan about dog fowling, but they don't report it, it's just something that they accept happens, although it is antisocial, it's, it's, it's a health issue as well as an antisocial issue. And everybody complains about dog fowling anecdotally, but very few people report it officially through the system. Certainly our street cleaning contractors also report it to us on a regular basis. So the order is there as Annex A. It does have exemptions in terms of equalities issues. It recognises issues around people with visual impairment and people with physical disabilities who might not be able to clean up after their dog. So we have done the equalities impact assessment and those exemptions are provided for in the report, along with an overriding exemption of reasonable excuse. And that will be for, for, for the court or the enforcement office to decide if somebody has a reasonable excuse for not picking up, if they haven't, if they can't claim exemption under one of the other clauses there. The order is very similar to that adopted by a number of other local authorities and I've highlighted in the report that Guildford, Chichester and Horsham all use as very similarly worded P S P O and East Hans, Hart and Rushmore and Mul Valley are still using the old Dogs' Fowling of Land Act provisions, but they will have to move across to public space protection orders in the very near future because they have superseded that previous legislation. So we're not the first, we're not ahead of the game on this, but we're not the last people to do it either. But we need to move this forward so we can start to take action against people. And it is a minority of antisocial dog owners. The majority of dog owners are responsible, it's just the minority that cause the problems and give every dog owner a bad name, unfortunately. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. Yes, so I apologise to councillor Foriszewski that we don't have your main interest before us tonight, that will be coming forward. Is it likely to come forward in January, to our January meeting?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, dog control orders, but would you like to speak on this issue? I expect you might. No, I think we want you to speak about this.
Tell us about poo. Oh, we've been waiting for this all evening, haven't you? Actually, this room is emptying rapidly, I feel like Mary No-Mate, it's like everyone seems to be going and maybe you thought this was an item they didn't want to hear. I want to thank Richard for, and his team for the report. It's very comprehensive and it's very good and it does highlight that there is a problem. And I'm, I'm so pleased that we are looking at just the part one as opposed to the part two, because there was, I think, part two has an opportunity to be shaped in conjunction with officers and professional pet services and get the best outcome for everybody concerned. And the word is, the word out there is that the professional pet services out there are really pleased to see Waverley engaging and actually listening to what's being said, so that's very positive. The report does demonstrate there's a problem and I think some, some parts, this really made me giggle. One point one one on page a hundred makes interesting reading. And then if we move to the table on the page a hundred and one, we look to see that the number of reports have increased in two thousand and eighteen in February, January, February and March. And then from the height of the season, when most people take their dogs out because the weather's improving and all the rest of it, numbers actually do fall. The report does provide evidence that there's a problem, but there's about nine million dogs in the UK with about twenty four percent owning one dog. So when we look at the actual, I don't know what the figures are in Waverley, but if we, if we look at it, there's, it's a number of animals that are out there. And let me give you a little insight into why we have such a big problem with dog poo. It's because our dogs' digestive systems are not designed to eat commercial dog food. So that's why you've got more poo, is because they put more rubbish in, so more rubbish comes out. So for many of you who will remember years ago, many, many years ago, when dog poo, here's a lesson in dog poo, now didn't realise we were going to get that, did you, Chairman? Used to be able to kick it and it used to disintegrate because dogs used to eat bones. They don't anymore, they eat rubbish and therefore you're getting a lot more because of the, because of the commercial market. So it's, it's worth, it's worth taking that into some sort of context. You're absolutely right, it's spoilt by a few who refuse to pick up, I don't know why. If you go to my jacket pocket there, you'll find I've probably got three or four poo bags in there. Empty, oh, yes, 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 thank God. But the equality issue really does make for interesting reading and the exemptions, the, it does highlight, the report does highlight some of the loop, potential loopholes when it comes to this. So when I was reading this, I was thinking, you know, when it comes to the exemptions, you know, I'm not disabled, but what if I get it one day and I don't feel particularly well and my back goes and can I then claim an exception because I don't feel a hundred percent, I'm not firing on all cylinders, I've seen it there, I can't be bothered to pick it up? Am I, am I, can I get off, get away with it? You know, I mean, this is where I think it all needs to be tightened up, is because it doesn't make it clear. And, and I never got the bit that a deaf person shouldn't be picking up. I, I just think there was some things in there that were a bit odd, that where there was exemptions to it, so, but anyway. However, it is antisocial, it, it is appalling, it is bad manners, it is a health issue, but so is litter, so is broken glass, so is overgrown hedges, so is fly tipping, so is overflowing bills, so is bins, so is parking on zigzag lines and double yellow lines, the list goes on. And we talked earlier about contamination of bring sites and the way we misuse our bins. And I think, Peter, you alluded to it beautifully and there was something Richard said about people have to take responsibility of caring a bit more. And really, it's down to us, I mean, as, as a race, we are so selfish and so, so such a disregard for other people's personal space. And I, and it, you know, it starts with us, it's our responsibility. So as I say, I'm glad to see this. I do have a few concerns about, you know, authorising officers lurking in bushes going, there's a hundred pound fine. Are they going to follow me to Black Down and places where, where, and there's a few grey areas where we're not sure about it, but I do endorse it, I do think it sends a clear message out there. I just hope that the people who are genuine and make the odd mistake aren't going to be penalised and I do hope it gets the message out there. Unfortunately, it's like everything in, in life, isn't it? It's the ones who don't care who won't pick up and will still abuse the system and it's the ones who do care who carry on paying the price. So I welcome this, there are a few, there's a few questions that I would have liked to have a bit more clarification on, but having said that, it, it just comes down to the exceptions, the exemptions. Assistant dogs, should we not just be sending? Assistant dogs, should we not just be saying they're assistant dogs? And that puts it into a whole new category. What do the fines vary from, £100 to £1,000? And again, it comes back to that point, will there be officers just watching and waiting and going, there's money in the bag? So, I do endorse it, I do welcome it, I do think it's the right thing to do. I just think we need to be very, very careful that it's done properly. Thank you Chairman.
Richard, would you like to comment upon?
Very briefly Chair, there won't be people lurking in bushes. They've got far better things to do. They're already enforcing littering and fly tipping. We've issued over 300 fixed penalty notices for littering in the last 12 months and over 36 fixed penalty notices for fly tipping, which is a £300 fine, not a £100 fine. So, they're already out there doing a lot of work on the other antisocial issues you've highlighted but dog fowling is one where we haven't got the power to take enforcement action at the moment so we need to bring it in with the rest of the package and they will be out there dealing with all those issues. So, they won't be following dog owners around and hiding behind bushes just to catch them. Thank you Chair.
Sorry?
I'm so pleased to hear that. And following on from that, so in areas of outstanding natural beauty where we walk our dogs, is that going to be, is that subject to the same order? And then if it is, how is that policed?
Richard?
Yes, it applies across the borough but we won't be everywhere all the time. The Rangers will have a part to play in this but it won't be their primary function. What we will do is base our enforcement activity on intelligence. So where people tell us there's a problem with dog fowling, there'd be the areas where we target action. Commonly, that's areas around schools and footpaths and alleyways in urban areas rather than countryside areas. So it will be intelligence-led enforcement action. We'll only be enforcing this where we're told there's a particular problem with dog fowling. So it certainly wouldn't be in the middle of a country park where, you know, there isn't really an issue with dog fowling. But if we get complaints that certain individuals are repeatedly causing a problem in some areas, then that's the sort of thing we'd follow up. There will be a period of amnesty during the first few months of this where we'll be giving warnings rather than issuing fixed penalty notices but it will be intelligence-led policing and it will be across the borough and it will involve the Ranger Service, the environmental enforcement officers and indeed any other enforcement officer the council has who's out there working.
Would JET that's coming on our next agenda, will the Joint Enforcement Initiative or team which is Hampshire, I think, would they be doing this, enforcing this for us or is it our own separately?
Yeah, East Hampshire District Council officers will be enforcing this for us as well as our own officers, yes.
councillor Welland, good evening and you wish to speak, I understand.
Yes, similar sort of theme actually to the one just been touched on. I feel slightly uncomfortable about the idea of effectively what we seem to be saying that we are going to be introducing an order that applies literally to every bit of land under our control but in practical terms, we're not going to enforce it. Either you do enforce it or don't enforce it. If there is a view that, for example, there are certain areas within the borough that's perhaps not appropriate to spend any time enforcing it on, why do we have an enforcement area on there? I think the overall concern and issue I have a little bit is that I don't think there's any disagreement about for issues on dog fowling on public pavements. It's certainly a major issue in my ward, whether irresponsible dog owners who do regularly allow their dogs to foul the pavements in our area. Don't think there's necessarily any issue, for example, about the, let's say, maintained public open space. My concern becomes a bit more if we're saying this is still going to apply to, let's say, the wilder areas we have within our whole area here. Because, for example, one of the appeals for a dog owner of having slightly wilder areas is you basically can yet let your dog off and run in that open space. Now, certainly if I take the dog to Black Heath or somewhere like that, for example, it can quite easily disappear in bushes, trees, whatever. I, as a dog owner, have no idea necessarily what it's doing while it's in there but I notice point three on here of the Dog Fowling Order talks being unaware of the issue. Still means theoretically I could have a penalty on there, yet the reality is probably, again, a deeply overgrown area, it's pretty unlikely most walkers are going to go through those sorts of areas. Normally people will tend to stick to footpaths and let certain areas on there. So I do have a little bit of a concern frankly that we're taking and applying on a borough-wide level something that perhaps may well be appropriate for 85, 90% of the land area we have but not necessarily for the other 10. And I don't, and again, just generally as a principle, I don't like saying we're going to have powers to do everything we like wherever we like but hey, we're not going to enforce it. It doesn't strike me as right. I would rather we were looking much more along the lines of saying these are broadly the areas we're going to cover but there'll be certain areas we recognise. We won't necessarily cover those. So I just flagged that as a concern I have.
Okay, thank you. Well, we want to wrap this up in the next couple of minutes if possible but Maurice please, if you, something else?
A couple of points. First of all, on Facebook very recently, I don't know who posted it or from where, there was a lovely picture of a bullmastiff standing on the promenade of a seaside resort looking very puzzled because behind him there was masses and masses and masses of human litter and rubbish on the prom that had been left by the visitors. And the question mark in his mind obviously is, why me? Why all the control on me when we don't control the human beings that are around? And that enforces a point about, you know, all the other things that go on. Second point, you know, I don't notice much dog mess around at all where I am. I'm sure it's there but I don't see very much, I'm not totally aware of it. I am aware of all the nice bags that are hanging from trees. I think perhaps we should have seasonal motives put on the bags so that it looks like Christmas trees when they throw it into the tree and then we know when to remove it and move on. It's those people that cause me more distress, people who bag it and then throw it and leave it wherever it might be and expect me perhaps to pick it up or somebody else, somebody of the nice soul to look after it. It's a very difficult one but I'm not over-problem with dog fowling per se on the ground.
Good, I thought you were going to say we could hang the dog owner's baubles on the tree but of course you wouldn't do that. Richard, I've got some problems myself with this. Only, I know it's been done elsewhere and this, but this is going to the executive next week, isn't it, for adoption? Is that right? Yes. So, you know, we need to think seriously about any comments that we need to make to the executive. When we looked at this a few weeks ago for our agenda briefing, I did point out that where it says that you've got to have a suitable receptacle, you've got to be able to, you've got to have a means, if you've got a dog with you, you've got to have a means of disposing of it. That means that you haven't got to go out with a bag, you've got to go out with two or three because if you use one, you've then got none left, so you're in breach of the order because you haven't got a receptacle. But what if you always keep a teaspoon in your top pocket? Or if someone tries to arrest you for not having suitable means, you just say, I've got a hand. This doesn't seem to me to give us particularly solid grounds for doing someone if they, or for making sure that everybody does go out there with, you know, enough bags or whatever. How does it work elsewhere? Do they have a problem with this? Or, you know, because we've got the reasonable excuse under Dog Fowling Section 1I, 111. A reasonable excuse for failing to pick up the dog poo would be sufficient? Well, who's going to decide on that? The other thing is, I'm a great fan of Alice's Restaurant. Everybody know Alice's Restaurant, Harlow Guthrie? Is there any chance that innocent people are going to end up in jail from this? Or even guilty people? I mean, I don't know that I wanted somebody guilty of dog poo, of dog fowling to end up in jail for it. I think that might be going too far. How far does this go? If people don't get, if people get fined and they say, no, it wasn't me. I haven't got a dog, for instance, or whatever, but, you know, we seem to have some evidence somewhere that suggests it's that person. If that person keeps saying, hey, but it wasn't me, but we keep saying, you've got to pay, you've got to pay, will it end up with them ending up in jail? Is there a chance of that?
I've never heard of that Chair. Obviously, if they don't pay the fine, the next step, if we've got sufficient evidence, is to take them to court. The court can fine them up to £1,000. If they then refuse to pay the fine that the court has awarded, they could then potentially be in breach of the court, contempt of court. And then it's out of our hands but I've never heard of anyone being put in jail for dog fowling but I guess if a judge, you know, if it went before a judge who's contempt of court, who knows what the judge may decide? But that's not our decision.
But it is a lot of money and for some people, I mean, all right, you know, you're a dog owner, they do, dogs cost money but nevertheless, you know, if it's up to a thousand pounds, that's a lot and if someone can't pay it and they're turning around saying no. councillor Welland?
Just one further question or observation I wanted to make. Presumably, we're choosing to bring this policy on the back of the survey response in question one in the Annex B. I suppose, again, going back to the point I was making earlier, Waverley encompasses a wide variety of terrains and conditions so I can certainly see that, for example, people living in built-up areas finding dog fowling on the pavements in the area, finding dog fowling on the recreation parks in the area, undoubtedly find that an issue. Personally, I find that unpleasant on there. But again, it seems to me to be a very general question. We're just simply saying it's where you live or visit in Waverley. That doesn't really say, for example, making the point I was making earlier, do people, for example, find it is a problem in the wilder areas, less maintained areas of Waverley? Yet we seem to be basing a policy on a fairly general question. And again, I feel slightly uncomfortable that we're basing, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe there were more detailed questions there that aren't there. But to me, it seems we're placing a blanket order across all our Waverley spaces without necessarily evidence to show that that's what people want in terms of the blanket order as opposed to specific more defined orders.
Thank you. Are you suggesting councillor Welland that perhaps we should have areas where, wilder areas, we've got problems with SBAs in Waverley if we're going to take such an approach? But if we were to, are you suggesting we have somewhere where people can let their dog off the lead and go wild and not have to pick it up without being at risk? Or are you just pointing out that it could cause complications because we're sort of going a bit overkill by having the whole of the borough? I can't see any real, I mean, we don't want to get into the details of every little bit of land that, you know, that it applies to or doesn't. We just want a blanket order, I think, that makes sense. But are you saying you do think we should have wild areas allocated where people don't have to pick up? Because I don't think our SANGs currently have that allowance. Richard?
Can I try and put it into context Chair? There are lots of laws in this country that apply blanketly across the whole country. They're not enforced across the whole country. Speed limits, for instance, are national speed limits but the police don't go down every lane in every part of every borough enforcing speed limits. They target their enforcement where there's a problem recognised with drivers speeding. And this is no different. The enforcement action will be targeted at areas where the public have said there is a real problem with dog fowling. Just like residents say there's a real problem with speeding in particular roads and the police will focus their efforts on those roads. So, let's try and get some context behind that. There are lots of laws in this country that are blanket requirements across the whole of the land but they're only enforced where the public have identified to the authorities that there is a particular problem. And that's the approach we will take with this, just like we will with littering and just like the police will with antisocial behaviour, speeding and any other criminal offences as well.
Just to check before I bring Wyatt in, I hadn't noticed until councillor Welland had picked it up, I think. We've got question one, question three, four, five and 24. Can I just assume that the others were personal or something and we don't need the answers to those? These are the ones that are relevant, are they? And we've got all the information that's relevant?
The other questions Chair, in the Survey Monkey, were about the other dog control proposals. So the first set of questions, one to whatever, were all about, is there a problem with dog fowling? Is there a problem with dogs off leads? Is there a problem? So these are the questions that related to dog fowling. The rest of the questions from the Survey Monkey will be presented in the subsequent report on other dog controls.
Okay, and the main residence comments that we've seen amongst these, I think most members will have picked it up, is that it's fine for blind people to, you know, we don't expect them to pick up the poo of their blind dogs but part C on page 104 says that has an accredited assistance dog and that applies to deaf people for hearing dogs as well. And a lot of people seem to think that it's very unfair that deaf people who can pick up poo and can be expected to should be exempted from it when the rest of us aren't. So, you know, is it unfair? Is there anything we can do about that or is this just, hey, you know, we've got to have some rules and that's what it is?
I think Chair, these are model, is a model set of rules that are being adopted by lots of authorities across the country and the guidance in adopting these provisions is quite strict from the government as to what we're expected to do and what concessions we're expected to put in there and what provisions for equality issues. So, we haven't invented that. It's a phrase that's in these that have been adopted by lots of authorities across the country and I haven't got an answer as to why it should include deaf people but, you know, that's the way the law is in terms of recognising disability in this country.
Okay, thank you. Wyatt, did you want to speak? Are you going to clear this mess up for us?
I did want to kind of respond a little to councillor Welland's observation. I actually, surprisingly for me, find this a well-written report and almost agree entirely with the detail. And it certainly seems to be a case of, we've got a standard model, let's try it. If we then find the specific problems to do with lots of deaf people running around with fowling dogs or some of the other categories, then we can then look to do something further. I kind of get the gist that if you're in the middle of an open moor somewhere and it's not a SANG because there's ground nesting birds or whatever issues, that it's not an issue that the dog's off the lead and you don't go scurrying after it trying to pick up the mess. But where do you start drawing the boundaries and saying that's in, that's out? And we'd create a massive amount of work to try and do that. I do think in practice, you know, we probably won't send people there to check and the people that go there, besides the people whose dogs foul, won't complain because it's out in the middle of nowhere. Because if you said, well, the top of this hill's out in the middle of nowhere, the little car park at the top of it, if what happened is everybody who's walking their dog parked there and the first thing their dog did as soon as it jumped out was craps, well, you'd then want to be enforcing the prevention of it in that subset of the area. So, thanks Ross, but I think you're going to the far too difficult category and I think the pragmatic, you know, if it's out in the open and you can't see it, then we won't be enforcing it is the sensible way. So, Richard, this has my support and in my view, Chairman, we should be asking the exec to get on and get it introduced and start at least covering 90% of the situation and then fine-tuning it.
Do members agree that we recommend that the, or that comment to the executive, that we give them our wholehearted support in this?
Thank you. Just very quickly on a point that was made there. What you have to recognise here is the number of responses to this consultation was unprecedented. So it just goes to show that the people who have actually replied care and the ones that are worried are the ones who are walking in the areas that we're talking about that might think, well, actually, because it's not clear. So I think if it wasn't, you know, if it was just one, I mean, the local plan didn't get as many responses as this did. So we are, you know, so it's targeted a greater number of people who will be more worried about it because it's not exactly clear. But like I say, I agree something should be done, we've got a starting point. But we actually can get fined now but there's no fines ever issued because there's no one out there imposing it. But let's see, I endorse the recommendation.
Okay, please if we can move on because we're going to go past our nine o'clock limit because we've got to talk about rubbish now. And I think Richard's going to talk rubbish to us as well. I do apologise, Richard, you're getting everything. Item 11, Surrey County Council, Community Recycling Centres. Richard Homewood, please.
Thank you Chair, I get all the good subjects. I've used this opportunity with this report to deal with two issues. One is the changes that happened to the county councils' community recycling centres last year year and the impact of those. And then because whilst writing this, the county council announced another set of consultation around further proposals to change the community recycling centres and the way they operate. So the first part of the report summarises the effect of the changes made last year by the county council. And I've highlighted those in the first part of the report, the changes that happened. And then I've looked at the impact of that because the three concerns that members raised at that time and we raised with the county council were about an increase in fly tipping, an increase in people burning rubbish because they couldn't take it to the community recycling centres, and thirdly, an increase in residual waste where people were hiding things in the bottom of their grey bin, such as tiles off of their bathroom wall and builders' waste that they, from DIY work. And they were the three key areas of concern. So I've looked at the reports of fly tipping. And interestingly, there was a slight peak in January this year, which was immediately after the changes were brought in, but then it tapered off. And over the year, in 2018 so far, 505 reports of fly tipping compared with 520 and 607 in the years each side of that. So no indication that there's been a huge jump in the amount of fly tipping going on. The only thing I'd add to that, though, is the increase in problems with our bring sites, which is a concern. Interestingly, with bonfires and smoke nuisance, no discernible increase in the number of complaints we're getting about bonfires or smoke nuisance. The figure for this year to date is very similar to two years ago in terms of numbers of complaints about bonfires and smoke nuisance. So no indication there that more people are burning their rubbish, or certainly it's not causing a problem to neighbours and residents. And again, residual waste, it fluctuates throughout the year. And you'll see, we've looked back over the last few years there, and the figures always fluctuate seasonally. They always jump at Christmas when lots more waste is produced and then tail off in the summer when people go on holiday. So that's a natural cyclical movement in the overall weight of rubbish per household. So again, no indication there that people are putting their engines in the grey bin instead of taking it to the tip, or their bricks or tiles in there, or their old bathroom suite in the grey bin. So the fears we expressed haven't really materialised. Now, all they did then was restrict the hours of the sites. I think if we look forward to the new consultation, it's actually talking about closing two sites in Waverley or one or two sites in Waverley. And the potential impact of that is far greater because just restricting the hours, people can adapt. If you know it's open on certain days, you can adapt your lifestyle to fit in with the opening hours. That's relatively easy. And if there's the odd bit of DIY waste, you can find other ways of disposing of it legitimately to get around that. But if actually close it, and it means you've got to drive another 10 miles to get to a site, then the risk is that that's going to cause a much bigger problem for us. And it may be that they then see our household recycling sites as the ideal spot to dump their rubbish instead of going to Whitley, as it would be if they closed the other two sites. So people from Farnham won't drive all the way to Whitley, they'll go to our household recycling centre in Farnham, in the central car park and dump it there instead. Or in Cranley, they'll take it to Stockland Square and Village Way Car Park and dump it there instead. That's the big fear I've got. And that will then mean our reject rates for those sites will just go through the roof. That's, you know, and on top of that, there may well be a greater temptation, rather than drive 10 miles, to drive down the lane in the dark and dump it in the access to a field or in a lay-by and that sort of thing, which we do see at the moment, but we could see a lot more if these closures go ahead. So I think they're my key concerns. Not such a big impact from the last changes, but that was really because it was mainly around changes to opening hours and days of opening rather than blanket closure. These proposals are more about permanently closing two of the three sites in Waverley, which we feel could have a very significant impact. And certainly, I'll be taking the views of this group back to the executive in December prior to the response going to the county council in time for the 4th of January deadline. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Yes, this is a big issue, of course, because, partially because, specifically for Farnham and for Cranley, because we're stuck out on a limb, so to speak, at, you know, opposite ends of the borough. And so Farnham particularly is next to Hampshire, and our choice really is to use Hampshire ones, which are not going to let us. So, you know, that can cause local problems, and I'm sure you get similar problems down in Cranley, although, yes, it's not that easy to get to Whitley, is it? Members? And councillor O'Shaughnessy?
Thanks, Chairman. I think Richard made the point very well indeed. If you close one, you've got a problem. If you restrict the days they're open, people will adjust. I mean, oddly enough, the task group looked at bring sites amongst other things. And the bring site that's nearest me is used by commercial waste disposers. It is not household bits and pieces, not the shoes and the clothes and other things. It's very much more and it's a hell of a mess. I mean, recently, I went to Farnham. My wife was having her hair done, so I thought, loaded the car up with rubbish I wanted to get rid of, and that was the day the tip was closed in Farnham. So where did I go? Borden. Borden's all right at the moment, but they're about to introduce, I think it's a five pound charge if you don't live in East Hampshire. But we had a good pub lunch on the way home. Got nothing to do with it. But, I mean, we have, Hazelmere used to have a recycling system. Then it was trucks on the Saturday. Now we have even more rubbish deposited on the Wayhill Car Park on a continual basis, whether mattresses, good, God knows what else. It's dreadful. And the idea of closing Cranley and Farnham, mad, absolutely mad. Farnham is what, close on 40,000 people? Are they going to get in their car and drive 10 miles to Whitley? No, they're not. Absolutely not. Total madness to even contemplate this. So Richard's suggestion of, say, having four or five days a week where you know they're open, particularly at the weekend, please, or get more brown bins. I certainly indulge in the brown bin lot, and that's saved me a lot of journeys to Whitley. But it is a problem, and I think we've heard one solution.
Thank you very much, Peter. If we, members, if we can take questions about the pub lunch outside of this meeting. Wyatt?
Something I wanted to do was, it was reflected in an early draft of the agenda, is just point out that if we close, if Surrey County Council was to close four CRCs, they believe it will save £500,000 per annum. If they closed, increased number six, which would include Farnham, they'd save £800,000 per annum. There's no Surrey County Council wants to close any CRCs. The trouble is, they've got to find the money from somewhere. And I would have great difficulty looking at the, looking in the eyes of a parent of a child who has had special educational needs and found that they'd had their transport to school removed. Or the family of somebody who needed adult social care to find that their package of care had now been shrunk. And for me to turn around and say, oh, well, we've done that because we needed to keep the CRC open at Farnham would be the wrong way around. So please put that into context. It is a consultation, so as I have already done, I've objected to the closing of the Farnham site, but at the same time, try and come up with other ideas, new suggestions, other things that can be done. And what I'll share with you, and copied if you like, I quite like, is the idea of switching from black bags to clear plastic bags. And then when you turn up at the CRC, where you're trying to leave it in your household waste, it's easy to spot that it's a bag of DIY rubbish or builders' waste, not household waste, or that it's general waste that you can't be bothered to sort out, that some of it could go into recycling and somebody's trying to hoick it into the bin for the black bags. So just please give your feedback, encourage all the Waverley residents to defend our two sites that are under threat, but at the same time, let's think of other things that can be done. And I'm really pleased that people are saying, well, if we had just a few days per week kept open, we could still go there, we just need to manage our time a bit better, with or without the pub lunch.
Richard, would it be true to say, I mean, I assume that you know more about this than I do, but are Surrey County Council looking to save money on premises and so just closing for another day a week or whatever? You know, they're not interested in what they want to do is to be able to sell off the sites and get some cash in as well? Or where are they headed? Because, you know, I do have this concern, and I think it was in our committee papers, some committee papers, six weeks ago perhaps, where it was talking about our new contract and the risks of our new contract with BIFRA, our waste contract from next year. There is a risk that we will have to pay more for land if Surrey closes their sites. And it was written in there as a risk, and within the space of days, this, you know, it's almost as though that, the fears came true with Surrey suggesting that they are going to be closing sites. Could that, is one of the arguments we should use, or should we be putting forward, is that this is going to cost us more money? Because if Surrey's site that Sue is, Sue is a contractor, aren't they, use, I assume it's Surrey's site, is it? Or is it, or do we own Farnham's CRC? It's not Surrey's?
The land that Farnham's CRC is on is owned by Waverley along with the collection activity right next door and is rented from Waverley. Now, certainly, I put in my feedback the suggestion that if we look more collectively as what it's worth doing from councils as a whole, that land is now squeezed between areas which are no longer semi-industrial units but are being developed for residential purposes. So if we moved the CRC and the related waste collection activities out of town, perhaps to one of the former landfill sites, we could release the capital to fund that move and a better site and probably still have something left to generate an income going forward or other benefits for the community. So again, let's look for and give suggestions on what else could be done. But yes, it's Waverley's that Surrey rents from.
And is that the case in Cranley as well?
I don't know, Chair, what the situation is in Cranley, I have to say. The reality is with this that it is a cost-saving initiative for the county council. We understand the pressures the county council is under to make savings. But the perverse thing about this is that it will be savings made by the county council but increased costs by the borough council for clearing up the fly tipping that results from it. So in terms of the benefits to the council taxpayer, which is the phrase that's normally used, it will cost the boroughs and districts more to clear up the mess, but it will save the county council money on operating its sites. And as I say, I don't know if there's any bigger motive about selling off land, but clearly the savings are bigger if you close a site down than if you just operate it on certain days of the week, because you've still got to maintain the site, even if you only open it three days a week. The ongoing basic running costs are still the same underneath, it's just the staff savings you make.
And of course, if we have to employ staff to sit at Stockland Square or at Central Car Park to make sure people aren't dipping everything in our town car parks, then there's going to be no savings, or we just pick up bills that we're not going to be able to afford. Peter?
Thank you, Chairman. A short time ago, we were talking about air quality. Do we want everyone in Farnham and Cranley getting in their cars to go to Whitley? It really, you know, that's a bit of joined up thinking. I do think, you know, we've got to find a way of saving Surrey's money. As councillor Ramsdale said, we, you know, we don't want to be losing transport for children who need is greater than money. We've got to find a way of reducing the cost. But I do think air quality does come into it, I really do.
Well, I don't know, there is an argument therefore that if we close Farnham Tip, people will leave Farnham and the air quality there will get better. So I'm not going to pursue that too much. We don't want to pursue that one, no. We need to be thinking seriously about what we think the executives should do. I mean, obviously, you know, they've got their own wisdom, they know that they are going to be putting out press releases presumably over Christmas, asking lots of people to respond to the consultation. We should also support that, I think. We should, I don't know that we need to remind the executive that it's a good idea to encourage people to respond and in the thousands. Will it make a difference to Surrey if they have, you know, 10 times as many people from Farnham and Cranley complaining as from other areas? Do they look at that?
Yes. I chaired a Waste Management Member Reference Group where the officers brought the data on the feedback from a different consultation. But quite clearly, to the officers and indeed our then arguments that went to Cabinet, which is the equivalent of executive, the volume of objections matters.
Thank you. So if we can have 10 responses from councillor Forisiewski, well, from each of us. Mary, and then councillor Bolton, I think, would like to say something, and then Maurice.
Thank you, Chairman. Surrey is in financial dire straits and they've really got to get their act together. I don't think saving money on these recycling centres will address the real issues of adult social care or children's services. I think the problem's much greater than that. Peter said we need to have some joined up thinking, we really do. We've got to look for different ways of looking for cost cuttings, and this isn't one of them. It really isn't. I'd take the point on exactly what Richard said, that if Surrey will make the savings, Waverley will pick up the pieces. There's nothing worse than a winter of discontent to make people feel bad and not proud of where they live because there's rubbish and there's fly tipping everywhere, and these things will increase. And I take the point about the amount of times we need to respond to these consultations. But you know what really annoys me here this evening about this? Is that it's not that long ago we consulted on this. When I was chairman of the parish council for Cranley, we got together all the parish councils within the area that was affected by this, and we sat round, we got the chap down from Surrey and we sat there, and we came up with some good ideas. They took it on board and they came up with this partial closures, which worked because then people felt they could compromise and negotiate it. Not that long after, you're talking about less than two, three years, we're now looking at them saying, actually, let's target the recycling centres again. I honestly, Surrey's got to get a grip and have a longer term vision, because without a longer term vision, if you're trying to mend a problem now, that was there 18 months ago, two years ago, you're not looking at the bigger picture. And I'm sure if we got our heads together and we looked at various things, there's the savings to be made in other areas. But I think what you're going to find is that it's false economy, it's short sighted. I think by doing this, you are going to see an increase. One of our biggest satisfaction levels comes from curbside collections as it currently is. I know we've seen from the report earlier, there's been a dip there, but generally, it's a service that affects everybody. Bring sites are affected simply because people misuse them. I hate to think what it's going to be like. And I don't think people actually report as much as they could, because they don't know how, they don't know the mechanism. I've heard it said to me several times, oh, I drove home from so and so and I saw a load of mattresses piled on the sides of the road. Did you report it? No, I didn't know how. You know, and it happens, burning, oh, it's one of my pet hates. At this moment in time, in an area in my ward, we're investigating illegal burning that's going on, that has been reported. So these things will only get worse. The answer to the bigger problem in Surrey is not these, not closing these sites, it's finding a better compromise, it's finding other solutions. This isn't the one, as I say, a winter of discontent, like we saw back in the 70s, is just going to destroy, you know, Waverley is a beautiful borough, we don't want to destroy that by allowing, it's false economy in my opinion, it really is, it's false economy. allowing, it's false economy in my opinion, it really is, it's false economy, and I think we could do an awful lot of harm. I'm outraged by it, quite frankly. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, yes, well put. We should become more civilised rather than less civilised, I suppose. Any specific comments to pass on to the executive? Andrew, did you wish comments?
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to comment at length on the financial interests of all the parties, and I think that's totally redundant at the moment. I'm very sympathetic to the views that people have expressed, and I particularly like councillor Foriszewski for expressing them so clearly. I do encourage the largest possible response from councillors and residents following councillor Ramsdale's suggestions that Surrey will listen to a large number. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Okay, so, and if we could just put in a note to the executive reiterating that Surrey will listen to numbers, we want numbers of responses. And yes, Peter.
Suggesting maybe that we send out a few press releases on the matter, getting people to respond to Surrey on the website, which isn't the easiest website to navigate through, I might say, but...
It would probably be a good idea to make sure that we have got a press release that goes out for the Christmas week Farnham Herald and that sort of thing, so that when people are sat at home, they're able to, over Christmas, they can, you know, with not a lot of other things to do, certainly they'll be able to pick up on it, but I'm sure they will be doing. Yes, Maurice?
It's got very quiet up to now, and I agree with all the comments with regard to the false economy or whatever of trying to do this. In terms of actually promoting it, Surrey-wise, I think it is a bit putting on to some of the Facebook pages, there are lots of community, I mean, the Godalming community page has got fourteen thousand readers. And there's a second Godalming page, which is Godalming and Village, which has fifteen thousand, it's not twenty-nine thousand in total, I'm sure, it's a few more, you know, most people are doubling up, as I am on there, and other ones, and getting in there and encouraging people to do that. We can all do that, just go on Facebook and redo it, as indeed Richard Seaborn has done for our own village. And I haven't done it with him because he's done it himself, and that's it. But that's one way.
I think everybody should go on, should go onto Facebook and pretend to be a Godalming resident like you do.
Well, this is the problem, isn't it? You know...
No, I'm joking.
Are you a Godalming resident? Are you a Godalming resident? No, I'm not a Godalming resident, but nor is the guy in Australia who likes to respond and all sorts of other places. This is part of the problem of, you know, social media covers all sorts of areas, and you never know where people are. But I find it interesting watching Godalming because of some of the points that are coming up and problems of crime and other bits and pieces, and I find it interesting to read and understand. I'm not necessarily making any posts myself, but I am watching and listening.
You're quite right, and people are promoting these, telling people to go on to the Surrey site to fill in the survey on social media, but yes, we've got to make that as big a campaign as possible. Okay. Yes, Wyatt.
Just picking up on councillor Isherwood's point about these sites, now it's difficult to find them, and if you've got a long chain of letters and characters to key in to get it because you pick it up from a paper document or a newspaper, how much better if all you're doing is clicking on the boo button because you're doing it via social media? I do hope that our communications department, when they send out their press releases, have tapped into sending them to the people who run these social media sites that have a local or a village responsibility, so that they're, so that the people who run the site can simply cut and paste from what sent them from Waverley to put on there, presuming they're in agreement that they should tell people that they should object to these plans. And of course, then all you have to do is click on the, I think normally highlighted in blue area, and you'll go to the right place. So I don't know who could take that back, one of the team?
I'm not sure, certainly Facebook, I'm not sure that the admin do that sort of thing, and they just leave it up to the people who post to put the stuff up. But yes, you do need a link to go to, don't you? Richard?
Yeah, I can confirm our communications people do use social media, so they are tuned into Twitter and Facebook, et cetera, so they will use that as a route to get to people.
Okay, any further comments, people? Let's wrap this up, it's quarter past, we've got one quick item, it's our forward programme. So any further comments on CRCs? No, thank you very much indeed. Okay, if I can just ask Wendy then to introduce item twelve, which is our forward work programme. I think we've got it sorted, so this should be quick. Thanks.
Thank you, Chairman. So a few things coming through into our February agenda, possibly the peer review. I'm just waiting to have that confirmed following, I think, the member briefing coming up shortly. We've got the second part of the Public Space Protection Order, so this is the dog control that Richard was talking about earlier, and the joint enforcement initiative. And we also spoke earlier about potentially having an update from the task and finish group. And I think that feels like the February agenda, unless you're telling me there are other items you wish to see.
Members, is there anything particular that you want to bring extra? I mean, we've got a reasonably full agenda there, but we can take more, we'll have a review of the infrastructure, task and finish group, a report back from that, won't we? Is there anything further that you'd like to bring on to the agenda specifically? Obviously, we haven't got time over Christmas to be able to expect officers to do larger reports for us or anything, but there may be time in the meeting for us to look at something if you've got an urgent environmental issue locally. No? Okay, you're happy, we'll take those items to the agenda and we'll see you in January? Yeah? Okay, thank you very much. Well, it's the last environment awareness of the year, so a happy Christmas and a happy new year to everybody, even though it's a bit premature, but yes, do have a good one. And thank you very much, officers. Thank you very much, members. Good night.